Okay, I have six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting in order, please. If you would, stand for our final round of dinner, which is an indication of Clay's weakness. Our gracious heavenly Father, I want to thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life. Thank you for keeping us safe through the holidays and into the new year, Lord. I pray, Lord, that, or thankful, Lord, for allowing this body to gather freely to do what's best, hopefully what's best for the people of Pickens County. Lord, be with our elected leaders, both here locally, state and federal leaders. Be with our nation's soldiers that are fighting for our freedoms, Lord, that we may have this privilege, Lord, to gather and to discuss issues that affect us locally, Lord. Go with us throughout the rest of this week. Forgive us for our many sins. And, Lord, I thank you again, once again, for all the many blessings of life and all these many favors and things we ask in our sons' name, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number two is reading of last meeting's minutes. I believe that was in November.
I'm in motion if they would accept what was written.
Second, I have a move in second to accept the minutes as written. Any discussions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously. Item number three is old business. There is none. Item four is new business. The first item is a cell tower application, and I want to ask, open up a public hearing for this, for this motion, for this application. And I'd like to ask Rodney, what county's recommendation is for this?
Yes, sir. In October the 3rd of 2019, we received an application for a cell tower located at 8269 Highway 53 East in Jasper, map and parcel 051003. Per the ordinance, the planning and development staff has gone through the processes of the written notice to the application of the receipt of the application. That was done on October the 11th. November the 10th, formal party of record filings were due. The county had received no official records of filings. Submitto filings, rebuttal filings, 1125 was handled. Recommendation of the Planning and Development Office was on December the 10th. December the 10th, the letter was issued. Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed telecommunications tower application for the above location. The application is for a 450-foot galvanized steel guide wire notify tower. Notification was given both at the site and in the Pickens County progress, per the county ordinance, and a 30-day period was given for any interested parties to become a formal party of record. No formal parties were recorded. The application has been reviewed and found to be in noncompliance with the county's telecommunications tower ordinance. The height limits are proposed to exceed the 195-foot called for in Section 66-75 (B) (5). For this reason, it is recommended that the Planning and Development Office, by the Planning and Development Office, I apologize, that this application be denied as submitted. Along with the application, a variance has been requested to address the noncompliance of the application. The requested variance is to Section 66-75 (B) (5) of the Pickens County cell tower ordinances. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office does not recommend this variance as requested.
Is a representative here that would like to address the board, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Clay Brogdon, and I'm the recently retired manager of site acquisition for Southern Link. Southern Link has since engaged me as an independent consultant to represent them in all zoning and permitting matters of this type. Southern Link is a wholly owned subsidiary of Southern Company, and we are the wireless communications provider for Southern Company's three large electric utilities, including Georgia Power, Alabama Power, and Mississippi Power. In addition, we also provide wireless communications to numerous local, city, and state governmental agencies, other electric utility companies, and emergency management agencies as well. Some of our other customers include the Georgia State Patrol, the Georgia DOT, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, and the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. These entities depend on Southern Link to provide reliable wireless communications, not only during their everyday activities, but especially after damaging storms, natural disasters, medical emergencies, and other critical and dangerous situations. Restoring power after storm damage is made much more efficient than using reliable wireless communications. Southern Link has made the decision to transition to a brand-new, state-of-the-art LTE communication system for our voice and data needs. Because of a gap in our service, we are proposing this evening to build a 450-foot tall guide tower off of McLean Mountain Road in the Marble Hill area of Pickens County to maximize coverage, capacity, and throughput data speeds in this area. In order to do that, we need the county to approve a wireless telecommunications facilities permit to allow construction of a cell tower on the site and a variance from Section 66-75 B5 of the Pickens County cell tower ordinance to allow such tower to be a 450-foot guide tower. The proposed 450-foot tower is designed to fill the coverage gaps currently existing along State Route 53 and State Route 108 and provide coverage in the areas of the Georgia Power Smart Grid devices located nearby. During the initial site property research, we investigated the target area for existing towers which would fill the coverage gap set forth above, and there were none. There are no towers within a one-mile radius of the proposed tower, and the two available towers within a three-mile radius of the proposed tower are not of sufficient height and not located close enough to the target to fill the coverage gaps due to the terrain and high elevations of the surrounding area. We believe the site selected is an ideal candidate for the proposed tower because our 100-by-100-foot leased area would be contained within a 352-acre tract of rural timberland property that will have a natural tree buffer and deep setbacks to help minimize the view from the surrounding area. In fact, we conducted a visual impact assessment with photo simulations, and will clearly show that the tower would not be visually intrusive. In addition, we found no evidence that the site is located near structures or sites of historic significance or within a scenic view corridor. Also, a 450-foot tall tower would be tall enough to facilitate co-location by other wireless carriers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and T-Mobile, thus the need for only one strategically placed tower in the area. We have received a determination of no hazard from the FAA for a 450-foot tower in this location, and they are the federal agency that regulates and controls all airspace in the United States. Since we are requesting approval of a 450-foot guide tower, we hereby request a variance from Section 66-75 B5 of the Pickens County cell tower ordinance, which, if enforced, would limit us to a 195-foot monopole tower. We absolutely comply with the variance considerations outlined in the county's cell tower ordinance. And I refer you back to the applicant's request for variance that was included in our application for all the details. I'm not going to read those, but they were included with the application that we submitted. Granted, this request for variance would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the Pickens County cell tower ordinance. In fact, it was serving. The proposed tower would benefit the health, safety, and welfare of Pickens County by providing better coverage for cell phones, which, according to the National Emergency Number Association, makes up 80% of all emergency calls now. Further, the proposed tower would strengthen the Georgia Power Smart Grid system, which would allow Georgia Power to significantly improve response times to power outages in the area. Additionally, the visual impact assessment shows that the tower would be unobtrusive and have very little visual impact on the surrounding environment. If the request for variance is not granted, then more towers would be needed to fill the coverage gaps along State Route 53, State Route 108, and the surrounding areas, leading to greater visual and environmental impacts. The proposed tower would also encourage future co-location by other wireless carriers, as mentioned previously. In weighing your decision to our request this evening, please consider, first, that if this new tower is approved by Pickens County, Southern Link would allow the county to co-locate antennas on the new tower at a mutually agreeable location and provide space on the ground for the county's public safety communications equipment, all at no charge to the county. This would allow the county to enhance its own communication system without having to invest tens of thousands of dollars in capital infrastructure and ongoing overhead expenses. Just to be clear, the county would be responsible for the cost of their equipment and installation of said equipment, but there would be no charge from the tower owner for the county's use of the tower and ground space. Second, we've been told that there are no interested parties who have petitioned to become formal objecting parties of record. And third, the Sheriff of Pickens County, Donald Craig, has been supportive of this project as well. In summary, we need the county to grant a wireless telecommunications facility permit and a variance from the Pickens County cell tower ordinance to allow for a 450-foot guide tower. Based on the information I have presented and the benefits that this tower project will bring to enhance wireless coverage in the area for our very critical customers and for the residents of Pickens County, I respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval to the County Board of Commissioners for final approval. This concludes my remarks. But I would like to take just a minute. I'm assuming Sheriff Craig is not here. And since I want to read his letter into the record, if I could, please. It's pretty short. I'll take a minute. This is from the Pickens County Sheriff's Office. I would like to offer an opinion in favor of the proposal to locate a cell tower on the Pool Farms property adjacent to McLean Mountain Road. I am aware that the area has poor general cell reception. Additionally, the tower owners have offered that should the need arise, Pickens County can put 911 communications repeaters. They are free of charge to assist any emergency communication with the county. Furthermore, I want to take a minute to address the importance of the green space afforded by Pool Farms to the yearly Jeep Fest event. Jeep Fest regularly draws more than 2,000 paying Jeep owners to ride trails and enjoy the home base obstacle and vendor base, which is located on the same property where the cell tower is proposed. These paying registered Jeep owners have allowed us, through the Sheriff's Foundation, to return more than $650,000 to nonprofits throughout the community. Pool Farms have leased us the property at well below their yearly tax bill for the property, which allows us to keep our costs low for the popular event, thus we are able to contribute as much of the revenue as possible back to the community. By approving this single cell tower, it will enable the owners to continue to hold this large open space in an undeveloped state, which ensures the Jeep Fest has a roller home. I would encourage you to give a favorable response to this proposal. And then, lastly, I just wanted to show you, because I'm a visual, so you've got about a minute and a half. I'll be done before. Here's a, I've got two coverage maps here that kind of paint a picture for you. This is the coverage hole that we're trying to fill. Turn around, there's no site there today. You can see the areas of white and light color are areas of very sketchy to non, to no service at all. So this is what we're trying to fill so that we match up with the neighboring sites around this location. And so if we are successful in being able to construct the tower, you can see what the coverage would look like and how it's filled in and how it matches up nicely with the surrounding sites here. So this is what we're trying to cover. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if you have any good
How does the 5G change, it's coming, impact what you're trying to do here with 4G?
What, I can only speak to what we're, we, Southern Link are developing, and that is a 4G LTE technology to predominantly serve the customers that we have. The 2A radios, the push-to-talk services is basically communicating one another. We are not developing 5G, at least not at this time. We're doing our level best to get a 4G built out. There are companies out there, Verizon, I think they're advertising now that they are, that they are rolling out to 5G, which is just the latest technology beyond that. It'll take them years on earth to get that built out.
So the 4G, it really affects the Southern Link platform?
They are, they are our number one customer, you know, because we are the provider of service for Southern Company.
Okay. On the Matthew show with the void spot there in the middle, why wouldn't a smaller tower be able to work off those other towers around there and achieve the coverage that you're asking for?
It would. It just doesn't cover as much. And I think this is the one that I'm going to bring up, and I can hold them side by side if you need me to, but this right here is coverage if we are limited to 195 feet instead of 450 feet.
So you can work off those other towers?
Oh, yeah. They will work off, but the hole is still there, and we circled these areas of concern that are still not covered like they are if we were to build to 450 feet. And there would be additional towers that would be required, and we just don't think, you know, that's been a good steward, to come in and put multiple towers around. So this is what we're trying to do, if we can, with one tower.
So the monopole would enhance?
It would enhance, certainly, but it's just not, to us, it would not be worth the, we would not make the investment that we have to make and still be left with the coverage holes that we have. I mean, we would probably do nothing before we would do that, but we'd want to do something because our customers are anxious for it.
The mining folks expressed some concerns. Have all of those concerns been addressed with respect to their activity?
Kevin, do you, are you familiar with that?
I'm not. Yes. That's a PE letter. All towers do take earthquakes into concern, so we got a PE stamped letter from, from one of our tower manufacturers.
I don't know if that was your question or not, but there's, got a design letter from Sabre Industries, which is a, no, I'm sorry, this is from B and T Engineering Firm, which basically says when they design a tower, they design it with seismic loads involved. And in this particular instance, we could actually come up here and take actual measurements at certain times when mining is going on so that it's actually designed with actual data, not just theoretical data.
But has that been done?
It has not been done, and wouldn't be done until we get approval for the tower, because the tower hasn't been designed and manufactured, because we don't want to be, you know, left holding a tower that we can't.
Yes, all towers are designed for, you know, for earthquakes and sudden activity, but we can be specific if we take data readings inside.
So I saw your pictures indicating no visibility, but I presume that that's a representative of what the tower would look at like at night. Is that a fair?
Yeah, the FAA determines what type of lighting and marking goes on a tower. You know, I mentioned that we've gotten a determination of no hazard from them. They are the agency which tells us what we have to do by law to mark and light the tower.
So this has got a couple of sets. How many would your tower have to be in compliance?
I think just a red beacon at the top and, and down a certain distance, red flashing lights too, which, which are, it's called a dual-lighted system, and it's made to not be intrusive to the surrounding area. It will flash a white strobe during the daytime when the sun's out. The sun goes down, that will turn to a solid red light flashing at the top and on the side, at one location on the side, I think, and at the top. And that's just for people flying to make sure that they can see it. It's just another way to notice it if you're, if you're a pilot.
But, you know, some people that I hear from, that I talk to are concerned about night pollution for lighting. And there's a couple of communities that are close by that, you know, while they won't see it much in the daytime, at nighttime, there's going to be a beacon out there.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is it's, it's not obtrusive. It is designed, because towers are in areas where people are, so these lights are designed not to be. Now, if that white strobe light stayed on and flashed on, I, yeah, we'd be hearing from people quickly about that, but that's the reason that they're designed like that.
So you're asking for two and a half times what the current ordinance is. So what would we say to the next person that comes along if we were to approve this that says, "I want to do one too"? Well, we'd be faced with 450-foot towers everywhere. Isn't that a risk?
I guess it's a risk, but, but in this, I mean, has anybody been, come forward for a 450-foot tower? I suspect maybe not, but it, but we're designing it to accommodate others too so that they don't come to you and even ask for 195-foot towers, because this one will serve this area for not only us, but all the other carriers who might be interested as well. And, and like you said, the view is really blocked by the naff forested area of the trees.
So, so how do you determine the rent rate or Verizon, let's say Verizon said they've got a bad cell coverage in that area, how do you determine?
Well, the tower is going to be built and owned by somebody other than Southern Link. We will be their anchor tenant. We have agreement with builder-suit tower vendors who will build and own. That's the business they're in. We just need to lease tower space. So that's what we will do, is lease tower space. But all of the carriers have pre-agreed to rates with the, with the big tower owners, and so it's, if they have, if they have a need to be there, they'll work out the rent rate with the owner of the tower, because that's how he, the owner makes his money is by leasing tower space to others too.
Can I ask a question, or is that?
Not yet, not yet.
Rodney, has the county expressed any need for the 911 enhanced service that putting something on? I know we've got one up on the mountain there. They've got a 911 tower there. Are there any dead spots that the county has expressed concern about with respect to radio coverage for emergency services?
There are a couple of spots throughout the county. However, I have not been approached by anybody in EMA or concerning the lack of coverage in specific areas or requested to address it with a tower.
This question I have is, so the county's got a 195-foot tower ordinance. How did the county come up with that?
That was, I believe that was based on the monopole design when it was adopted back in 2009.
Okay. And that must be, because generally you don't see monopoles greater than 200, 195 feet tall. They do make them, but they are, they have a big base, and they're particularly intrusive, so that may be why you're limited in the height, kind of because of the natural highest height of the monopoles, you know, like, yeah. And there's no money required either generally if you're under 200 feet.
Well, I know that, you know, I live not too far from where this would go up, and some reception, I'm with AT&amp;T, I think, to be.
Sure.
So when you carry on to the bus or anything, but reception is.
Beautiful.
He said, he said that is not perfect. Sometimes it would have to improve in order to fit. So, and then I know that I went to Jeep Fest this year, and I mean, depending on how you stood on one leg and held the phone up, you might have one bar maybe for just a second, and then it would fade away, so. And I know that some people in the area that they rely on their cell phone now, they've taken away their landline phone, and 911, for them to call 911 could be.
Life or death. I mean, if you need, if you need somebody, you can't get them.
Right. Well, that's a concern.
And, and I'm sorry with our linemen, too. They need to be able to communicate clearly, or somebody's going to be hurt.
How do we know that's going to cover everything? I live right on the south end of town here, and I can't get out of my house with my cell phone.
Yeah, well, who, I mean, the tower going there and Southern Link going on the tower is only going to help you, particularly if you're a Southern Link customer. It will only benefit you if, if the other carriers co-locate on the tower. But if their coverage is less than pitiful, like somebody said, my guess is if there's a tower there, they're going to have to build plans for Metro Atlanta like everybody else does to try to fill that, especially if there's now a structure available for them. But, but I don't want to mislead anybody. Us being there is going to improve us. It's not going to improve Verizon or AT&amp;T until and unless they co-locate their stuff on the tower.
And Verizon, AT&amp;T are showing interest to municipal communications to the tower owner. They're in discussion.
And again, that's municipal's business is getting, you know, they don't make a lot of money just off of us, but if they can get Verizon and AT&amp;T and others on there, they all of a sudden can make, you know, a business out of having a tower.
Well, they make enough to make it worthwhile to do.
You mean, well, not.
With, with Southern Link.
Well, they'll tell you, it's a money loser with just us paying them, but they've got a big investment. I mean, they've got, you know, three, $400,000 investment in the site there, and it takes a lot to pay back.
That leads into what your question about pricing. The industry has tier one, tier two, and tier three carriers, and Southern Link's like a tier three carrier. They cannot pay the same amount as Verizon or AT&amp;T.
We're not a nationwide carrier. We are a regional southeastern United States. Where we sell electricity, we provide wireless communications.
So when this ordinance was adopted back in 70, '09 or whenever?
Yes, sir.
10, 12 years ago. Was this type of tower available 10 or 12 years ago?
Oh, sure, yeah. Guide towers have been available for a long time, and guide towers are typically the tower of choice for taller applications, you know, like this. Monopoles are really good for under 200 feet, 200 feet and down. And then self-supporting towers, the three-legged type towers, generally, I mean, they can be 1,000 feet tall, but you generally don't see it. You know, they're, they're generally between 200 and 400 feet tall.
What type of objections have you observed after a tower like this has been constructed somewhere by people that live in here?
I've been doing this 25 years, for a long time, for Southern Company, and I can remember a complaint that we got. It was yours and mine discussion just a few minutes ago, when those red lights didn't come on at night and the white strobes stayed on, because it was just a glitch and the thing got out there the next day. But we got phone calls from people complaining because the strobes were still flashing at night. That's why I made the comment that I did. It's probable that happens, but it's, it's easily fixed, and we get somebody out there immediately to take care of it. And that's happened one time in the 25 years that I've been doing this, where the call made it to me, anyway.
Any other questions or comments before we go on to public?
Does that include me or?
At the end of it, you can. Did you sign up? Did you sign?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, then we'll, we'll get to the public. We'll get to the, here's what we're about to get to, just a moment.
This is my first meeting.
I understand. That's, that's all right. Since you signed up, you will speak.
All right, thank you.
And now I'm just going in random order here, so, you know, you might be, well, I know you're not Dan Poole, but you may be second or last, but you will, I promise you. Any other questions? All right, next one is public comments. Mr. Dan Poole, is there something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, the founder and owns the property. Just give a little background. 352 acres. We have owned it since, basically, essentially since the Cherokee Land Lottery of 1800, since being, sitting in green space, growing trees, and Jeep Fest sitting at that time. And we would be, wanted the tower. It is a way to make a little bit of revenue back from having the property. I would ask that, you know, y'all consider one, the impact of one tower on 352 acres versus other uses we possibly could do with the property. And I'm not saying we would, you know, we would open it up for development, but if we had a tower on it, it would certainly allow us to, as Sheriff Broden, as we, I discussed with him, allow us to keep it in a green space. And we can formalize that. It's currently in one of the COVA, though, which restricts development, and it's got three years left in the current cycle in the 10-year COVA. We'd be more than willing to put that into another 10-year COVA and fill it with rough language that would require us to do that. So, you know, the impact of our one tower, which, you know, what are, if I can see the red light, would not be ideal at night for night skies or anything else. The impact of one red beacon versus residential development versus street lights versus, you know, anything else we could do with all that property is that we think it's a minimal impact. We like having the green space. We like seeing the green space there. We obviously liked it for our family for 150 years. We'd like to have a green space there for another 150. So if we would, you know, sign a COVA for another 10 years and we keep it off the consideration for further development till 2033 if we got to sell the tower there.
The taxes might go up since you just enhanced the value of the property.
I've got some of the bases covered.
Okay, Mr. Brian Griffin?
Yeah, I'm with Georgia Power. I'm the area manager for Georgia Power. Just speaking on behalf of our line crews. When we go out to do restoration, anytime we've got to do any kind of switching or cut off any circuits so we can switch without anybody getting hurt, we have to call in the dispatch. And sometimes what they have to do is, is get in their truck, drive down the road till they get a signal, get the signal, call in the dispatch, come back up, open up the switch, fix the problem, get back in the truck, drive back down, get a signal again, call dispatch and say, we've got it fixed. We're going to close it back in. But back up, close it back in, go back down again and say we're closing back in. That's kind of what happens when you don't have a good signal. Plus for the CRGs, the smart grids talked about, when those get in place and we're in the process of looking at that across the system, the system itself will make changes for us. It can communicate and make the changes for us as opposed to a truck having to be dispatched. Now, that won't be, you know, individual situations. Those will be certain key locations that could suck your power places. But it will help, the reception will help our line crews when they're out there trying to put up work and have to get in a truck and drive them off and get ahold of somebody who knows what to do. And even sometimes when they're dispatching, I don't know if y'all have ever watched them, but sometimes with a dispatch, if it's a big storm, you've got a lot of folks on Old Mary trying to get through. It may even take them longer than just riding down, calling and driving back. Have to ride down, they may sit for 15 minutes trying to get through dispatch because the whole state's got problems. So that's some of the things. Anything we can do to speed that up gets the restoration going. Helps you guys, and I'm not why it helps us too, because the meters start turning if you've got towers.
Do you want to save our, want to keep our rates low?
Right, yes, yes. But they, we're not going to feed power to the tower, so it doesn't give us any benefit from that. That comes down to color. But it will help us in terms of restoration. It's a big help when you've got good radio service, do restoration.
Ms. Helen Higginson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for letting me speak. And I came today because this is an important issue. I think that the electromagnetic sensitivity that's going on on planet today, we don't hear nearly enough on, you know, we hear one side, but we don't hear the other. And I have been researching this myself for a few years now. And I would like to say that I'm grateful for the planning and zoning board for turning this project down because, let me get my notes here. Things that I've learned. Recently purchased this book called The Invisible Rainbow by Arthur Firstenberg. It's a history of electricity and life. It goes back all the way until the development of electricity. It's kind of hard to get through some of it. I'm not quite through the whole book. But I have studied Nikola Tesla technology. And I think we all know that the entire planet, we're all electromagnetic beings, plants, animals, even the earth. The healthy harmonic resonance of the earth is 7.8 hertz. And that's the first human resonance. And it's the natural resonant frequency of our earth. And we've been going kind of crazy here with 2G, 3G, we're talking about 4G. I notice, I don't personally use a cell phone, but I know a lot of people that do. And I have not heard any of them, as you all, a couple of you all referenced, that their cell phone coverage has actually ever improved. I mean, we've been doing this now, how many times? 3G, 4G, it's going to get better, faster. But there's still an awful lot of dropped calls. In fact, I was just speaking with a friend today in Gainesville, where they should have plenty of coverage and towers. And her call dropped. Oh, is that all I get? Anyway, we.
Two minutes remaining.
No.
Oh.
She's spoken.
Two minutes, okay.
So has that been?
She's spoken for two minutes.
No, I didn't know there was a time limit. Let me just briefly finish. Escalating wireless radiation in 5G, it's studies done, called cancer-causing headaches, sleep disturbance, heart disease, diabetes. Mutating DNA in plant and animal and human life, which is the most disturbing to me. There is an international appeal to halt 5G with over 180,000 signatures. 3,000 of those signatures are physicians around the world, 2,500 scientists. So I would ask that the board please vote this down. At the very least, table it until more can be done. And I do have a handout.
Please, for your time.
That I want to give to each one of you if I may. Is that all right?
Pass it out, will I? Mr. Jerome Norton, go ahead and speak.
Hi, host, I'm Jerome Norton. And I own 60 acres just to the east of this cell phone tower. You might think I'm here in objection. I'm not. In fact, they'd come to me first. I'd say, heck yeah, I'll take the money. So I'd be pretty much of a hypocrite if I would say, no, I don't want it to be on my neighbor. Yes, it's going to be an eyesore. But I'd rather have one eyesore, and Bill knows exactly how my property lays. And it's going to be visible from every square inch of my property. I'd rather have one eyesore than a dozen scattered all over that part of the county. And if you get in your car and turn on your cell phone, I've got Verizon. You can't pick up the signal once you leave going east out of Jasper, and you can't get one all the way to Yellow Creek. You can't get one down to the river. And it's hard to get one in Ballarat. So we need something. And if, like I say, I'd rather have one of the house than a dozen. And it's going to be in my backyard. Now, I do have a problem with the cell phone providers. I think that a person that's within 500 feet of the base of this tower should receive a little bit of a monthly compensation. My property is going to be adversely affected, where everybody else is going to get very good service. I'll get good service too. But it is adversely affecting my property in reducing the value of my property. Now, I'm not planning on doing anything with my property, other than building a house myself and giving a chunk to my five grandbabies. And hopefully have a family compound on one of these days. I own a property across the road from it. It's been in my family for over 200 years, across the street. So I'm not against it. But hey, guys, if you would, how about remembering me and saying, I'll give you my address so we can send a check? Or I've got two other pieces of property, one in Cherokee County that's on Butterworth. You can see the whole Norton, Jordan mountain. Or you can look down and see Kennesaw.
Mr. Norwood?
Yeah. It's low over two minutes.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions for the board?
Is that all we have?
That's all the public?
You got it.
Comments?
Two five-minute rebuttals, both of the county and both of the applicant.
Okay, so, okay, so we can have up to two five-minute rebuttals, one from the county, one from the applicant.
If that's used.
If need be.
County has no further arguments, other than to say that from a technology standpoint, the county has no objection. Unfortunately, what it will do is, once a variance is granted, it opens up a whole new world of applications. And whether the planning commission wants to go back and revisit the ordinance, that's something that the planning and development staff is more than willing to sit down with them, if that's y'all's choice.
Absolutely, sure. I can remember Rodney making a motion to incorporate his file into the record.
Not yet, after their. But yeah, the other thing would be, just something to include on my department files, including but not limited to all submittals, files, materials, minutes, and video this evening to be included on the record, please.
Any other questions or comments? Is there, is there anything she'd like to add?
I need about one minute.
Okay. You've got five.
Okay, yeah, I won't take nearly that long. But I want to address her comment about RF emissions and that kind of stuff. And I can tell you, 25 years ago, this used to come up in every hearing when we were here. And so Congress acted and developed what's called the Telecom Act of 1996. And I've got a lot of stuff, however, there's just a short one that I want to read to you that I think is pertinent. And it says accordingly, although Congress left the regulation of the placement of wireless towers and antennas largely to local governments, you guys, Congress specifically prohibited local governments from basing their decisions on the environmental effects of RF emissions. And the language in the act says, no state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. And we do comply. And the reason they did this is because the emissions from the towers, by the time you get down to the ground, has such little effect that everybody meets the guidelines and everybody's way under what the FCC allows in terms of RF emissions. So I just wanted to say that directly.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, my main concern, Rodney, is we opened the door. And I guess the point that Clay has made is that the one tower is going to, it's going to solve that particular issue. It's not going to solve it everywhere, obviously. And I just don't know. I mean, we do set a precedent.
Could I just say, since I have five minutes now, I don't want to interrupt it. But I know there are towers taller than 195 feet in this county. So, I mean, it's obviously been done before. So this won't be like precedent setting, from this will be the first and only tower that's taller than 195 feet.
I don't think those towers were after the adoption. I think those were pre-adoption.
Okay. And I haven't gone so far as to do that research yet, so.
Yeah, I want to remind everybody that we are a recommending body. We do not make the final decision on the new application that will be presented tonight or any other night. But that final decision will be voted on by the board of commissioners at the following meeting. Any other discussion or your motion?
I want my motion that the application as submitted with the variance, I'll be denied because it does decide in compliance with our rules and regulations. And if this is amended, do you think it's a bad precedent? Make a motion that it be denied.
Your motion to deny?
So, Pat, so your point is that it's beyond the 195?
Way beyond it. Double, half of the times.
You support the recommendation?
I do.
Right.
So we have a motion to deny the application and to support the county's recommendation. Is that right?
Wait a second.
Right, right. I just want to make sure I had the question. Do I hear a second? If there's no second, the motion dies. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application be approved. Hear a motion to approve the application. Do I hear a second?
Let me make it clear, that's a motion to approve the application as well as the thing that's real.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the application and the variance. Do I hear a second? Have a move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Order, order.
Thank you.
Report.
You need to call today.
Hold opposition. One. Okay, the next item is item B on the, under new business. We have a rezone request, RG-1119-1906. I'd like to announce that, well, that previous hearing on cell towers closed. Now this is open, this area is open for RG-119. I'd like to ask Rodney's what the county's recommendation is for this rezone request.
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Joe Herman submitted a rezone, a 3.0-acre tract of property located on Bryant Luke Road in Ranger, Georgia. Basically what it is, he had purchased a piece of property that is adjacent to his property. It was listed as a different zoning classification. And the purpose of this hearing is to combine that into one zoning classification with his original parcel, which I believe is agricultural. And it is the recommendation of the planning and development office. It is approved.
To be approved?
To be approved, yes, sir.
Mr. Herman, is there anything you'd like to add or comment on? Is there any questions for the county or Mr. Herman? There is no people signed up to speak one way or the other.
I move to accept the recommendation of the planning mission relative to this hearing.
We have, we have a move in second to accept the rezone request. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. unanimous? No opposition? That hearing is closed. We have one other rezone request. I'd like to announce, we want to have a public hearing open for rezone request RG-1119-1908. I'd like to ask Rodney, what the county's recommendation is for?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jeremy Anderson submitted a rezone of 5.11-acre tract of property located on Carver Mill Road. The purpose of this rezone is to change it from rural residential to small ag. Yeah, I believe it's a gentleman's intent to grow vegetables, possibly some fruit. And he was needing it to get into the small ag in order to do a roadside stand to where he could sell those vegetables and/or fruit from his property. And it is the recommendation of the Pickens County Planning and Development Office that this application be approved.
Mr. Anderson, is there anything that you'd like to comment on?
Uh, Mr., basically, just, uh, any questions or comments from the board?
When's the stand going to open?
I don't know. We have to, there's a lot of fence. There's some work to be done, obviously. Five acres, there's not an acre and a half that'd be not too difficult. That's already kind of, was partially under pasture at some point. And so that would be cleaned up. We already removed, when we purchased it a few months ago, that's why it's cleaned up. There were some old campers that were there from already on. that were there from already don't know how long. So we paid to get that totally removed. They came in with some equipment, wiped it clean. So that eyesore is totally gone. And so now we'll just go in there and start doing some minimal clearing on that one and a half acre part of it that's the most usable. And those trees are relatively small. We're talking maybe three, three, four inches, just a lot of scrub type stuff. And if anything that'd be planted, that's what would basically be, there might be some small animals, goats, that kind of thing to kind of take care of it, but that's pretty much of the discussion.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? If not, we have two people that would like to speak. The first one is Mrs. Susan Dean.
Hi, this is my first time too. Nice to meet you, neighbor, and we're looking forward to... My husband is, this is actually his family's property that he ended up purchasing. We own the house right across the street, which we're going to move in permanently by the end of the year when I retire. Our only, we're fully supportive of the intent of what they want to use the property for. We think it's great. We are much happier to see what he wants to do over there than those campers that have been there for several years and the paint cans and everything else. Our major concern is with the stand that they would like to put up and the safety of the people on that street. Carver Mill Road has a lot of traffic up and down it. We're there, we see it. They do not do the speed limit. They are going 50, 55 miles an hour. And as the property is now, unless they make a provision for patrons to be able to pull off of the road and have someplace that they can park their car, we're concerned that there's going to be somebody that's going to get hit. We also don't want it to be a situation where we end up with cars because his stand has got great vegetables and there's a lot of people there that they're lining up on the sides of the road, on his side as well as our side, because our house is directly in front of Papa. My husband's father used to grow vegetables right there. So that's our major concern is just the safety of anybody coming in and purchasing from the stand, that there'd be some type of provision that they can park off of the road, maybe make an area on the property with a few parking spots or something, so it doesn't interfere with our driveway, people pulling in there or parking in front of our house. But other than that, we fully support and we really hope for it to get in there, using their family.
I can address that, sir, if you can. Please, go ahead. Visual here, this is a property, basically kind of a narrow stretch, five acres, imagine that, just an acre and a half here. Now, in order to put up a fence, it has to be 40 feet off of the middle, and so, and then there is already a, there's already a driveway. So if we were going to do anything like that, there would be fence here, fence here, and here, and then there'd be a driveway. And if there was any customers, they would have to park behind that fence. So there would be specifically no parking on the roadway, no parking on this other spot that's actually county maintained anyway. So if anybody was there, they were going to park, they have to come in and they have to park behind that.
The next person is Mr. Bobby Dean.
My wife has said just about everything that we wanted to say. My only concern is it says that sell of goods and produce. If he's selling goods, it kind of leads me commercialized. So that's my concern. I don't want to see him selling other things other than produce if he's going to put up a stand out there. So I don't have any other concerns, and you answered the way about how you're going to do the program, where you're going to set up the stand, but it is a concern because of the traffic up and down Carver Mill Road. And like the guy said before, the property's been in our family for over 100 and something years, so anyway, it's still good property and grows good food.
I can address that also.
Go ahead.
I put other products, my children, actually, and my wife, they, oftentimes they'll sell baked goods. And so we'll, if we at some point make, turn it into a home site and have a small home on the property, there'd never be a potential cottage business there, which means that they would, any kind of baked goods, baked bread, that kind of thing, and we would use our eggs to put in the bread. It's almost all natural type ingredients, and so I wanted to make that clear also, that there would be those type, those type things. So there, technically a different way to sell eggs, is you sell it through the bread which you make and that kind of thing.
Any questions?
Making motion to accept the recommendation of the planning department relative to this...
Have a moving second to accept the recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous?
I'd also like to express the same request that I had for Article A for the last two, for all the documentation and the files and the video to be included for the record.
That hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is board commentary. Are there any comments from the board? If not, the last item, or the next last item, excuse me, is public comments. Are there any public comments? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moving second to adjourn. Motion are needed and rejected.